To order the situate planning board for Thursday, August 13th, 2020. If you would like to participate via remote access only, there are phone numbers, And the access code is 538960 pound, or hashtag, whatever that is. And then for video participation, HTTPS, semicolon, slash, slash, join dot freeconferencecall.com/situate1. So, welcome all to the party. All right, our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Rebecca. All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Warrenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Perchek?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we now have a continued public hearing, stormwater and site plan administrative review, common driveway, 16 and 18 to 20, Man Hill Road. Mr. Tansey, are you with us? We have to unmute you somehow, some way. Mr. Tansey, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Just shake your head.
How do we get him off mute? I love these things. There it is. All right, Greg, are you with us? Hello, Greg?
Okay.
All right.
It's his volume.
Turn your volume up.
All participants are unmuted.
Okay. What is that?
Hold on, I gotta go back and mute people.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we have the continued public hearing, stormwater and site plan administrative review. And I have to tell you, aside from the fact that we really have nothing new from you all, and looking over these plans and what was discussed the last time, I have to say that I feel that this particular piece of property, as I said the last time, that's being really smushed together, for lack of a better term. And I'm wondering why these are supposed to be retreat lots, and why are we sandwiching in three big houses, along with septic systems and riprap and a barn that we have no clue where it's going to go, if it's going to stay at all? And I am wondering if you all would be better served to go back to the drawing board and do two houses, deal with your stormwater, and make that work so that you don't want any easements, but we do, and get rid of the common driveway. That's where I'm coming from. I think that it is an overdeveloped parcel. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's how I feel. And so, I'm cutting right to the chase as far as this, um, this common driveway and stormwater. I don't like it, I really don't. I think you're putting too much on too little. Patty?
Well, I agree. And on top of that, the HOA leaves a lot to be desired.
Can you hear her, Greg? Can you hear Patty?
Yeah, I do. I can hear you.
All right.
The issue is, is that I know the last time you made a big, um, a big commitment to the lawn, and having, having a big backyard, I would prefer to not see that all overdeveloped as a lawn and see it a little more natural, if we're gonna go that way, but I do agree with you, and it's a lot of house on a little bit of property.
Ben?
Yeah, yeah, if I could interrupt, I mean, uh...
Uh, no, not yet, please.
All right.
Paul? No. Ben?
Um, I don't have anything particular right now. I would like to hear from them about what, if any, changes have been made in this current iteration of the plan.
There hasn't been any.
In their response to comments, it seems like some of the stuff we asked for, they've decided they don't want to do, particularly the easements and things, so I'd like to hear a little bit of the rationale on that. That being said, um, from a, from a design perspective and a zoning perspective, I do feel that it is a stretch to fit this much infrastructure and housing units on this property in the current, in the current form. I mean, if we wanted to do perhaps smaller square footage, or less disturbed land area, if, I mean, if we could make it work, that's fine, but I think we're kind of losing track of the purpose of the common driveway by law with, with this current, current plan. And, um, uh, I guess I'd like to see, hear more about the current revisions and then how maybe it still could have a chance of being better.
Rebecca?
I'm just gonna agree with Ben on that one. I'd like to hear what the changes were also.
And Steve? Steve, do you have a comment?
Sorry, I was muted.
Oh, jeez, come on.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would echo Rebecca and Ben here. I'd like to hear more about what, um, some of the recommendations and discussions we had last time are not, uh, you know, were not implemented. I do think it's a very tight, uh, decent property here, and, uh, give the performance an opportunity to speak.
All right. Paul, you're on.
All right. Yeah, okay, thank you. First of all, these lot, lot one and two are more than twice the size of the lot requirements in the zoning issue. Lot three is just over $30,000 square feet. This is what happens, you know? You get a lot and it's a lot to the left, it's quite a lot size in this part of Situate. The, the, we're building on these properties here, and what we've done is show some of the home that has been built in Situate in the last five to 10 years. The reason you see all the, all the grading and the disturbance is that's, that's what we're required to do under both Title V and the town of Situate stormwater regulations. The, the septic systems are matted because of the groundwater elevation requirements, but the majority of the grading around these houses in the back is all due to your stormwater requirements, which we have no control over. This plan, as you know, has been reviewed by Merrill two or three times, and meets all of the technical components, the septic systems which have been approved, as well as the stormwater. We spent a lot of time on this to meet all your rules and regulations. This plan clearly conveys them. There have been changes on this plan since the last meeting. One of the things that we did was, I, Jared gave me a copy of the minutes of the meeting, and I, I went through those. I, I also went back and looked at the comments from Merrill's. There's no more technical review based upon the last done review comments. And we also looked at some comments that Jared sent, and they were made of a board member after the close of that, of the last public hearing. This is all outlined in our letter, I sent it stated August 6th. And there's also a revised operation in our maintenance plan that was, was also submitted to you, which takes into account some of the comments made, well, as a particular document. Probably the biggest issue we had with the comments from Merrill was, in the board, was the requirement for an easement at the rear of lot two. What I want to point out is, is you, I'm sure the members know that, the house is only to be 30 feet off of the rear property line. These, these houses are anywhere from 100 to 150 feet back from the rear property line. Where we're also providing a vegetated buffer that is anywhere between, I believe, 50 to 55 feet in depth. What I show on the plan is that, that buffer strip would be marked out, fielded with a sort of, 10 plaques, which would have a sign on them saying that, um, that this is a tree and vegetated buffer area, uh, no disturb zone. This is, this is what the board has to do on, on the current farmer states and the open space. So, we're, we're using that same technique here. What, what that does do is, for example, on lot two, the, the rear yard usable area, including a subsurface recharge area for the stormwater, puts that backyard down to a usable area of about 45 to 50 feet depth, which is a relatively small yard area. That, that, that large buffer in the back for these houses isn't something that is required in a stormwater right, that's not required in the zoning by law, but the board has to provide it, and, and we have accommodated the board's wishes in that matter. Relative to the easement on storm two, the reason we're opposed to it, and why it's a problem, is whoever by, you know, when, when, when that plaque goes on the market for sale, that's gonna be a problem, number one, because you have an easement in the backyard, number one. And number two, that, that, the easement really isn't needed, because the stormwater management system on these lots have to be maintained by each individual homeowner. The other thing is, as I pointed out in my letter, who would the easement go to? By, by law, the, the owner of a lot cannot grant an easement to himself. So, if, if there was an easement on the property, someone else would have the rights in it. In this case, my...
Can I interrupt for a second, Paul?
Please do.
Could I interrupt, just to give clarification on what you just said? Isn't the, isn't the requirement for the maintaining of the stormwater system, do you know, in several, that all three homeowners are, have the responsibility, not individual owners?
No, I'm saying individual homeowners, if you require maintaining the stormwater components under each individual lot.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying the O and M plan for the, the common driveway requires that all three homeowners maintain the system. So, the idea of one to maintain it does not mean that it doesn't get maintained, right? All three of them have the obligation.
The common driveway agreement, Steve, is only for the common driveway, for lot one and lot two. It's that common driveway does deserve lot three, which is a smaller lot. But the common driveway agreement suffers from the stormwater, um, the stormwater is required with each individual lot.
All right, hold, hold on one second here. Hang on a minute. Hold it, Todd. Karen?
I don't even think I got a common driveway agreement. So, I don't know what you're talking about. I didn't, I didn't get a common driveway agreement to distribute to the board. All I got was an O and M.
Yeah.
All I got was an O and M plan.
For all three lots.
For all three lots. And I'd like to say that I got this material last Thursday, which was the deadline for submission. There was not enough time to have it peer reviewed and send it to our consultant. That's why the board has no new comments, and I'm, I didn't, I mean, I sent the information to the board, but they didn't, they didn't really review it, because why, why should they, when it wasn't submitted in a timely manner? And, in fact, we didn't even get money for the review to happen till this week. And the O and M is still not quite right. How do you put sand in permeable pavement?
You guys have some work to do here, gentlemen.
Yeah, and, and if I can continue, when I started my presentation, I, I, I told the board and I sent my letter, we don't feel there's any more technical review to be made. These, these issues that I outlined in my cover letter of August 6th are issues that we have to discuss with the board, and that's, that's what I'm trying to do today, to go through this list. If I can finish where, I, I started with that easement. I, I, I started saying that, A, the person of lot two, the, the owner of lot two cannot grant themselves an easement over their stormwater system, because a property owner cannot grant themselves an easement. Easements on someone's lot are for use by someone else, other than the owner of that particular lot. In this case, assuming you did have an easement on lot two, I'm assuming the person on the downhill side, which is lot one, would have a, that, that's the owner that, that would have the right to do something within the easement. The only thing I can think of is what they do is, if the person in lot two wasn't maintaining his stormwater system in his backyard, and, and was causing an issue on the downhill lot, which is lot one, then that person on lot one, if, if he had the easement rights in lot two, he could go out of the lot at his expect and correct the situation. So, that, that's not gonna happen in, in the real world. However, because this is a stormwater bylaw, the stormwater bylaw has a requirement that each owner of each lot has to maintain his own system. Now, on lot two, that stormwater system in the backyard, the recharge system, it's also part of his lawn. It's about 10 to 12, it's about 10 to 12 inches in depth. It would be a grassed area. We, we've also added two more inlet boards, that one of the members asked that we do, we provided that. That's a recharge system for the water coming off of the house roof area and some of the lawn behind the house. That, that, that water stays on lot two, it doesn't go anywhere else. Yep, if it isn't maintained, then it has to be maintained, and the only thing we could think of that would be a problem is if they don't, if they don't have the lawn mowed on a regular basis, and they don't remove the leaf litter and the fall. Other than that, there's really no other maintenance required for that system, the way we have designed.
I'm sorry, but that, I don't think that's consistent with what you submitted. You submitted as HOA maintenance agreement that all three lot owners are responsible for the ongoing maintenance.
Yes, yes, you did.
That's, that's what's been submitted. So, if you're telling me you're withdrawing that, then tell me what you're replacing it with. But you submitted a, a O and M plan that says the members of the homeowners association, which I haven't seen yet, shall include the respective owners of lot one, two, and three, right? And they shall be individual or the beneficiary of the entity currently are named on the property, right? And they have ongoing maintenance tasks, and jointly in several, at the homeowners association. That's not right. That's what I'm saying. You, you already, you said you're creating a homeowners association here.
No, I, I, I thought you left the application and maintenance plan that we were asked to revise, they took out some comments from somebody that was made after the close of the last meeting. I, I, I took those comments that were forwarded to me by Karen, and we addressed those in the revised O and M plan, which, which was revised, um, on August 6th. And what that does is, to follow the comments that were provided to you yesterday.
I'm reading out of the August 6th O and M plan, and that's exactly what it says. So, it says that all three lot owners are responsible. They're all members of the homeowners association are responsible for the ongoing maintenance. That's what it said.
The, um, the, 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 the systems on each individual lot are maintained by each individual lot owner.
No, it's maintained, it's maintained by the homeowners association. Now, they may split up who does what, but according to the way you have it set up, the homeowners association is responsible for the operations and maintenance.
Shawty at that.
I'll, I'll, see, I'll have to go back, go again, because that's, that's, that's not the intent of, of a stormwater system when we have three individual lot owners here.
That's not what you have done.
They all very much have the intent of the plan, Paul, definitely.
All right, as far as I'm concerned...
We'll go back and review, yeah. Other than that, you know, yeah, I, I heard your comments about the fact the board thinks this site is overdeveloped. It isn't, because the lots are more than twice the size they have to be. You know, the, the first two lots, the last lot is just over the, I think it's 23,000 square feet. These, these lots comply to the zoning requirements of the town of Situate zoning by law. They also meet the design requirements for your stormwater management system. We're, we're, as you know, we're, we're providing a 50 to 60 foot vegetated buffer in the back of lots, which is not a requirement in your stormwater rights, but that's something the board was adamant about, and we managed to incorporate that into the design.
You don't want...
Just to find all this, in the, in the location of the septic systems, in the stormwater systems, the, the area for the houses in the usable yard areas that was squeezed up quite a bit from what you normally see on a lot this size, given, you know, anywhere else in Situate.
You said it to us, Chris.
Excuse me, Steve, you said...
Here's the problems with, yeah, here's, here's the issue I have with your argument. If we come in, you know, when someone comes to us with a piece of property, we sit down, we go through the zoning by law, and we look at the rules and regulations, and, and we have to design it according to those rules and regulations, period. We have done that, and then the board is taking it a step further by asking us to show that, in this case, the, the redeveloped portion of this property is gonna be, uh, restricted, um, to a much larger extent than what, what is, um, what is actually required in the regulations, and that was to repeat the neighbors in the back. The houses behind us, as you know, are way out on the street. You know, the, the plans aren't what they are, but...
Yes, Paul, they are, the plan...
These plans meet all the rules and regulations.
They may meet all the rules and regulations. It doesn't mean that I have to like it. I feel that it is too much development, overdeveloped, but that's just my opinion. As long as I suppose people meet the rules and regulations, we have to do it, but it doesn't mean I have to like it. And I have a, a real problem with this O and M plan, what this is all about, where's the homeowners association plan, what about the common driveway? Do you have to have a common driveway, or can each one of these houses access to the street without a common driveway?
No.
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 So...
And, and, the, and, the reason I did the common driveway was, was to limit the number of driveways coming on the Man Hill Road. And we, we, we could have done a lot, so we did not need a common driveway, but the common driveway is very short. It's only coming into the beginning of the, of the area of the barn, and, and from there, it, it services the two homes. Rather than have three driveways on Man Hill Road, we've only got two.
Okay, and what are you doing with the barn? On your plan, it says it's going to be moved somewhere else on the property. And how does that affect your... How is it going?
What, what the note said is that the barn is to be removed, relocated on site or elevated to allow access from the common driveway.
And that is...
I mean, the, I mean, the, the common driveway goes around the barn. If, if someone wants to keep the barn, then they can keep it there, or, or they could move it to one of the other lots, or just tear it down and have nothing there. And, you know, the only reason I left it there is that, you know, that, that's the existing barn, it seems like it's in relatively good shape, so we decided to leave it there. But if someone doesn't want it, they could certainly tear it down, and, and once they tear it down, they want to be able to put it back, because it doesn't meet the setback requirement, so it's current location, it's a pre-existing, uh, not controlling structure.
All right, Paul, here's the thing. Whether you and I agree or disagree is immaterial. There are some definite things lacking in all of this. We need to have the common driveway plan, we need to have the homeowners association, we need to figure out this O and M, and we need to continue this meeting. Any comments from the board? Steve?
Can I, can I ask a question here? Is there a draft homeowners association agreement?
Not that we, no, no, there isn't.
Okay, well, we need that.
Yeah.
And then, second, we need the, we need the O and M plan.
Yeah.
To be consistent, um, and I don't think it's, as Paul described it, I think it's as is written in the plan. And, um, this is the first I've had a chance to look at, quote unquote, for revisions, so I don't know what revisions were made here. You know, it'd be nice for somebody to flag what, what actual edits were made. And at the end of the day, we need the homeowners association and an O and M plan tied into that homeowners association that we're in agreement with.
And a common driveway. Yeah. We need to have the common driveway specifications, correct, Karen?
The common driveway agreement in a homeowners association can be one in the same document. It depends on, I mean, the way it seems to be written, all members are gonna be part of the homeowners association and O and M, and I would assume you should do then a homeowners association versus a common driveway agreement. But they're basically, they all say the same thing, no parking in the common driveway, who's responsible for maintenance, and was the visibility issue discussed? That was another issue that was left at the last meeting, too. Is there visibility to see onto Man Hill Road? How much tree trimming actually has to occur?
Okay, all right. We are pushing 7:30, and the end of your time, Paul. So, you have your work cut out for you, and we will see you again on...
Do you want to do any public?
Is there anybody from the public that needs to say something? Real quick?
Okay, so this is gonna be tricky.
Hold on.
I have to go on to Q and A. People are gonna be muted, so you just have to be patient as I unmute.
Q and A session has started.
Hey, Marla, can you hear us?
She hasn't, no one's plugged yet.
No, you're muted.
Please hit star six.
Hit star six, Marla.
Um, if they wanna join in. It should have given them instructions.
Nope.
Okay, there's one. Just recognize that one.
Charlie Washington is pending. I don't have any comments to add to what's already been stated.
Thank you. Marla, have you been able to get yourself together here?
Does she have any comments?
Marla, do you have any comments? Anyone else?
I'm gonna end the Q and A, and I'll try to get Marla unmuted.
Q and A session is over.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah?
Yes.
I've been here for a while.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. All right, we are moving this, we are going to continue this public hearing for the stormwater permit and common driveway to October 8th.
No, no.
24.
October 24th. Go ahead, Karen, read it.
Uh, I'm going to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the stormwater permit and common driveway site plan administrative review for 16, 18, and 20, Man Hill Road until October 24, 2020 at 7:00 PM, and to continue the type of action for filing with the town clerk until December 30th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Is, is, before we go again, is, is it clear, is everybody clear on what we need?
Yes. Yes, they better be.
So, Paul, I will offer that if you'd like to come in and meet with Ann and myself, we will be happy to meet with you.
More than happy.
I'll plan on doing that. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so we have to do the roll.
Hold on, call you tomorrow or Monday, set up the time.
Very good, thank you.
Are you ready for the roll call vote?
Yes.
Ms. Burban?
Yes.
Ms. Knapper?
Yes.
Ms. Guoiseen?
Yep.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Precher?
Yes.
Thank you, Ann, that's all in favor.
It's a vote, thank you.
Thank you.
We never did get a hold of Marla, did we?
No.
She waved her hand, so...
Okay. So this portion of the meeting is over.
All right, thank you so much. Moving along, what's next? Where is my coastal resources? Oh, yes. We have...
Kyle Boyd.
Kyle Boyd, and where is Kyle Boyd?
He's here.
Hello?
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 Can you hear me?
Mr. Tanci, Kyle.
Am I covered in?
Yes, you are.
Hey.
Hello?
Hi, uh, yeah, so Kyle Boyd, I'm the local manager opposite. Uh, thank you for having me. Um, we are coming into the deadline of two big land planning efforts, so I figured I'd start off by your little history of how these came to be. Um, in 2018, there was a coastal community assessment that was conducted where the Consensus Building Institute, through a grant received by the EPA, interviewed residents, business owners, civic organizations, pretty much everyone in the community, like different groups in the community, to figure out what they thought the strengths and weaknesses are of being a coastal community. Um, and basically, these interviews were compiled, and there were recommendations that came out of this. So this was a community-led effort in 2018. We came up with recommendations, and there were four recommendations in total. Um, one of those was that there needs to be a cohesive coastal vision process that's undertaken, led by the community. And another was that there needs to be plans, um, done for the harbor, for the future of the harbor. So with that being said, um, we applied for grant funding to conduct the coastal vision process. Um, and that is the 2070 vision. And we also applied for a grant to do a downtown harbor master plan. And so, from my perspective, one of the big things that I had heard when I came in and took the position was that there were so many plans, um, there wasn't a lot of harboring between the residents and the community. Um, and, you know, this process, one of the big goals we had was to start the process of kind of obtaining that public, at least from my perspective, this is one of the important goals, was to start getting, um, some public support and some, basically build the community-town interaction in regards to coastal planning. And so this process had a, both processes, the coastal vision and the downtown harbor plan had incredible emphasis on public outreach. Uh, you know, the, we have the two consultants with us tonight, and I'll speak a little bit more on that, but I feel really good about how hard we worked to make sure that all residents and business owners were included in these planning efforts. Um, and there are, so as a follow-up, you know, the vision, the 2770 vision is completed, but that was a two-part process where we justified for a grant to, um, basically come up with a 10-year implementation plan. So we're hoping we receive that money, and if we receive that money, it would take the results of the vision, um, the master plan, and the downtown harbor, um, master plan, as well as Penney Beach Management Treaty study, and the Storm Tide Pathways Grant. I know that's a lot, but it's going to take all those reports and try to come up with a 10-year implementation plan, which will be, um, another very important planning effort for this community. Um, and you'll hear from Josh about the downtown harbor master plan as well, but there were specific findings and recommendations that are substantial moving forward that I'm really excited about. So, you know, the best part about this is that it was a community-led effort, and there is community support in this. So with that, I know we don't have too much time. I'm going to hand the microphone over to Elizabeth, Community Consensus Building Institute, and then followed up by Josh after that. Elizabeth, can you, can you, uh...
Yeah, hi. Hey, can you hear me, everybody?
Yes.
Great. Um, I'm Elizabeth Cooper. I work with the Consensus Building Institute. We're a nonprofit firm that provides facilitation and mediation services on our range of natural and built environment issues, and we do a lot of work with municipalities in Massachusetts. Um, I'm happy to talk with you about the 270 coastal vision process that we've been undergoing, and we're about to concede. I'm wondering if I can share slides, or if I should just talk?
Um, whatever...
Share slides?
Whatever works.
Is that share slide button that's easily viewable further, or is it on? Right at the bottom of the screen?
I wonder if I have a different, because at the bottom I have, can you audio/video invite?
I just sent you...
I just invited people in reaction. You, which just, of course, Cooper is perfectly ready. All right? I don't want to waste your time figuring out a copy of this form for...
All right, why don't you just chalk us through it then? Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, um, as Kyle said, the goal of the vision was to create a community design for resilient vision for our coast in 50 years. And the idea was that if the community can come together around a vision that was more sort of coherent than what had been sort of the different plans that have been passed so far, that could become a sort of beacon for which to plan and make other investment decisions over the coming years, over the coming decades. And it was sort of intentionally chosen as a really sort of far-out in the future timeframe to kind of enable some of the sort of bigger picture thinking that is needed for people about sort of really big questions of rent and opportunity for the coast to the future. And it, and the plan, and the vision sort of kicked right inside and seek to address the challenges facing the coast due to intense storms, eelbow rise, and erosion, sort of big picture issues that with coastline faces. And we repeatedly ramped in the late fall of 2019, and then began engaging with the public in January. And January through February, we did a lot of sort of on-the-ground, in-depth having neighborhood gatherings in people's homes and hearing from them sort of the key issues that are important to about the coast, and sort of still did a framework for our vision. And COVID came, and a lot of our engagement plans changed, but we were still able to work with a lot of folks. And basically, I, in March and April, we had a lot of online engagement, did surveys. In April, we held two community workshops on the vision where we had pretty... And then, we then sort of took that feedback, created a draft vision, got feedback on that, carried a draft vision into our, additional draft we'll keep asking right now, we're sort of pretty much finishing because of the final five visions. Um, and over the course of that time, I think we had between 255 or 250 or so people engaged in live meetings, whether in the same room or sort of face-to-face virtually. And we had hundreds and hundreds of people engaged with the online platform. Um, and just sort of very quickly, basically, the key components that sort of erode in the vision were four pieces. Beaches, that the community envisioned several distinct beaches that are beautiful, accessible, provide recreational opportunities and protection. Um, the future of the harbor, that it would be a gathering place for the community as a tourist destination, and that businesses there would be moved out of harm's way or would be protected from the harms of the coast. That coastal development would have, there would be a mix of built and natural spaces on the coast, with those areas being safe and natural areas being connected to each other. And finally, the town character, the community character, which sort of maintained the classic dimension, small-town feel, um, and then year-round, summertime destination, and sort of adapting to changes while remaining true to the city's legacy. And basically, the report, which I think Kyle has facilitated to the planning board in draft, has multiple components. It has a sort of statement of the vision, which goes into much more detail than I just said, a description of coastal risks, um, a sort of range of implementation considerations to put forward for the community to consider, and then some appended information, further information. Um, and so, I'm happy to kind of talk through, let's see, very quickly, um, the risks that the coast is facing, as we know, storm impacts, erosion, eelbow rise, risk to infrastructure and property, and then also the sort of funding challenges, about how to fund the investments that will be made on the coast. And the report aims to sort of set up sort of proactive thinking about the vulnerabilities and what kind, and its opportunity on the coast, and what the community would like to kind of create. And then it discusses a number of implementation considerations incorporated in the service of planning for the 10-year action plan, which I mentioned. But this was proposed as a two-part process. The first is doing this community vision, to sort of think about what the community wants to support, and then the upcoming feedback we can apply for funding for with the town. Um, basically aims to create like a detailed action plan that says, given all of the really good and extensive analytical data that Situate's coast and Situate is actually very lucky, you know, have been as sort of had its vulnerabilities, and it often is a pretty well studied. Given all of that information, and given what the community has expressed in terms of the vision that it wants of a long-term sort of goal to work towards, what are the actions that need to be taken for the next 10 years to begin to get Situate there? And a number of those are sort of actions that will be implemented in the near term, and then there's some bigger questions that will need further studying. Um, and so there's, I mean, when we discuss sort of coastal resilience strategies in the report, we put out, basically, there's sort of like four buckets to think of. One is strategy for the ecology, um, which means keeping structures where they are, that like elevating structures, public lifting, et cetera. Another is defend, which means preventing water from reaching the structures of the first place through sea walls, or beach nourishment, or elevating roads. Um, another is move, which means getting structures and people out of harm's way through things like buyouts or land swaps. And finally, a fourth option is no intervention, allowing essentially nature to take its course. And so, we describe several examples, and several sort of pros and cons of different examples in each of those buckets, and sort of tee that up, again, for sort of the decision-making phase in the 10-year action plan. Um, I feel like I could go on, but I would just like to hear from some of you and try to answer any questions, because I don't know if any of you have a chance to look at the report that Karen shared with you. Um, but I'm happy to elaborate further.
Any questions from the board?
Well, I did read all 140 pages.
You did?
Yes, I did. And I find it, because I've lived here a long time, I find it very, a little pie in the sky-ish, to put it bluntly. Um, the thing that was most astonishing to me is how First Cliff is really cut off once the, if that bridge washes out. Um, I know that the coast is eroding, I don't know how much we can keep up with this. I almost envision like a pot of Vecchio type thing. It's really part of it, is it goes across the harbor. Um, and I guess one of the biggest challenges for me is how do you attract other businesses besides restaurants to Situate Harbor?
Thank you. Ben?
Thank you. I think I'm...
We're going to go...
If you want me to respond, you can take other questions.
We'll take other questions, and then you can respond, okay? Thank you. Ben?
And I'm trying to hear the folks who might be in the room, if they can speak up a little bit.
Thank you. Ben?
Um, so I don't, I don't have any specific questions right now on the plans, but right now, as you guys are probably aware, I know Kyle is on the advisory group at this point, but as the planning board right now, we're currently redoing our townwide master plan. And obviously, Situate is, you know, the coastal issues are an incredibly important component of our master planning process. And basically, I just want to make sure that, and I think we've stressed this to our consultant that's helping us with our master planning, that we, since you guys got really granular with the coastal issues and really focused on those, we want to make sure that kind of your work on the coastal issues is included in our, in our process, and also maybe even supersedes some of the information that we have on the coastal, coastal issues, since you've obviously gathered much more data and analyzed it like with a, with more of a laser focus. So I just think, you know, working with Kyle as the liaison, it would be really important to integrate this report into our, into our overall master plan. And then I'm hoping that some of the recommendations that you all have come up with can kind of be on the pathway to actually be incorporated into some zoning bylaw changes and updates, which is the eventual goal of kind of our master planning process. So I think the report, I wasn't able to read it in detail, but I skimmed through it, and I think everything's great so far, and I'm impressed with the level of public participation and how that process was completed. So I just want to make sure and stress that as a planning board, we're committed to kind of including that information, and hope that we can kind of get all of our ducks in a row here.
Thank you. Rebecca?
I don't have any comments at this time.
Steve?
Uh, yes, Elizabeth, thanks for that overview. And, you know, the, the components that you identified that are part of, you know, kind of an important vision in Situate, I fully support, right? Um, the beaches, the future of the harbor, et cetera. I guess my question is, in terms of, those are, um, those are things that we would like to continue to have and maintain. My question is, how much sort of the reality and science plays into what's feasible here? Um, while it might be nice to maintain, you know, a beach or beaches, you know, when you look at seven feet or more of sea level rise, you know, in the next 50 years, how likely is it that we can, we really preserve that, you know? Are we, are we, you know, as they say, spitting into the wind here? And, and, you know, not just from the perspective of physically and from an engineering perspective, but from an economics perspective, how likely is it that, you know, the town in Situate, which has essentially no, you know, career tax base, that the 8,000 or so homeowners in Situate can continue to fund what is extremely expensive interventions, in some cases like defending the line, or, you know, that kind of thing? So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand where you're going with it. I mean, a 10-year plan could be, could be all kinds of things, right? And is a, is a 10-year implementation plan looking to the 2070 as the future? And is it informed by, you know, what could likely be the case? Um, that there are things that we won't be able to do? So I guess that's along with the way I say, I'd love to hear kind of your thoughts and the group's thought about the challenges that we face, trying to hold on to those visions to be, well...
Okay, Elizabeth, would you like to respond?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Would you like to respond? Now, your turn.
Oh, sure, now, here it is. So I don't have to hold so many things that I had at once. So I'll start with the most recent question from Steve, thank you. And hopefully I'll touch on the other two comments as well. Um, I agree, like, you know, the vision is, I hope that, I hope that the vision resonates, I hope that those four components resonate.
I hope that those four components resonate, and to the point of it being sort of pie in the sky, I think our point in articulating those values and goals, all of the components are achievable, but they can't all happen in all places all the time, you know? So, it's going to involve some serious sort of prioritizing and trade-off making to figure out, you know, where Situate should have beaches in the future, and what investment decisions are going to make to prioritize any of those different values. Certainly, the commercial tax base or the tax base question itself is one of those sort of sort of trade-off questions. Right now, a lot, as we know, a lot of your residential tax base is property, which themselves are going to be very vulnerable in the future. We, on the master plan that you all have been working on, we coordinated and had several conversations with Harriman, I assume that's the plan you're talking about, the townwide master plan. And so, we have been sort of sharing information back and forth with them, aiming to have sort of close, you know, alignment and sharing of information between us. And one, one thing that we didn't address in our plan, but which we sort of highlighted to them, and we hope is going to be sort of manifest in their plan, is, you know, that there are needs and opportunities to develop alternative sources of tax revenue, and sort of where in the town might it make little sense to have further commercial development to expand your tax base. But I think, I think what this plan, what this vision aims to do is to sort of say, if these are the things you want, these are the sort of key considerations you really need to keep in mind as you try to determine how you sort of rank your priorities, and how you determine where you want each of those things to happen. And we didn't do analytical work sort of costing out the different measures, although a lot of that work has been done, and more of that will need to be done in the 10-year action plan, but if you look at the report, you'll see some discussions of, you know, gee, if you try to defend everything along the whole coast, that financial rekind of like out of the sky there, you know, that would be really hard to do, but there are some investments that you can make, and so it's, you know, and Situate's gonna have to make kind of big choices in the coming decades about what to defend, what to move, what to adapt. And we really tried to give good information to be making those decisions, but we did not, in the visioning process, recommend which decisions you should come to, as I did for the 10-year action plan. And Steve, your question is, 10 years of action is more important than 50 years on horizon, it doesn't, we don't finish after the 10 years, but the, so we're recommending that all of those actions that happen in those 10 years are sort of for long-term planning and long-term gain. So, I don't, I hope I leave...
Ben, I would just like to add to that real quick. You know, from a, from a planning perspective, like what we were tasked with was to come up with a cohesive community vision, and from a pie in the sky type place, it may appear that way, but I just can't emphasize how important it is to have the community all on board with a vision. And that's what we have now. And before this vision was established, we had a lot of resentment existing with a lot of things we were hearing from feedback, was that people don't trust the town, this group doesn't like that group. I truly feel that at the end of this process, we have, we have a cohesive vision. Now, the hard work really is going to have to take place, and the hard questions are gonna have to get asked and answered. And the 10-year implementation plan is a two-year grant process, so it's a little more intense than this process, but I just, I just wanted to emphasize that we absolutely had to come up with the vision, no matter how broad it is, because now we can move forward under that umbrella strongly, which I think...
Yeah, I really appreciate that, and I, I'm on board with the vision. I like those, those features of the vision. I think you've done Yonah's work and tried to just boil it down to just four, that's an amazing accomplishment in and of itself. I guess I'm moving on from those to say, you know, what are realistic, doable actions given the tremendous stress of climate change to meet those visions? And, you know, even though there may be a vision, there may be components of it, and I think Elizabeth said this, that just are not doable, right? And when you look at a face of seven feet of sea level change, right? So, again, please don't take my comments or questions as trying to chew on with anything, I'm just trying to understand what, you know, kind of what power you took in, and what's left to be done, if you will. I think you've got to make work here.
Yeah, so in this next 10-year implementation plan, that, there are some things that just right now aren't doable, from like a straight-up policy standpoint across the state, like the policy that's in place doesn't necessarily reflect what needs to happen, but that doesn't, like, so we're gonna recommend, in this 10-year implementation plan, as a community, what we think needs to happen, and it's gonna be prioritized, so we'll move on the things that can happen right away, and, you know, come up with steps on how we can try to accomplish the things that are a little more hard to accomplish. For example, in the harbor, there is an hedge that is primarily owned by the town. You know, that's an area that there's, is obviously still a huge project, but when a town owns, you know, something like that, that's an area where there could be a significant project implemented, you know, with a little more public participation and a little more engineering. So, although there are areas that it's gonna be hard to accomplish things, there are areas that we can do significant things. So, this next phase of this whole process is gonna look at that in more depth, and identify the struggles, you know, this is what needs to happen, and this is why it can't happen. And we applied for this grant with CDM, with them knowing that we are the pioneer in the state, where we hope to identify these problems that are hard to accomplish for every community, because this conversation can no longer just happen in towns. We may need to change, or we look at policy and things like that, so...
Well, great, great. I mirror Ben's comment about making sure it gets dovetailed into the master plan, because it's, it's great work. So, thank you very much.
Kyle, thank you very much for your input. Unfortunately, we have a public hearing coming up at 8 o'clock. I just have to commend you with the number of people that you have involved in this process. You are to be applauded. Thank you, thank you very, very much. And we, I'm sure we will see you again very soon. Thank you.
Can we have time for Josh to give a brief few minutes on the harbor, or?
Let him.
Let him, yes, yes, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Are you unmuted? Hello?
Thank you.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Josh Pielello of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, thank you for taking a little bit of a few minutes extra this evening. I'll try to keep it very brief. So, parallel to the process that Elizabeth just outlined with CDI in the town, the MABC undertook a look at Situate Harbor, the business district itself, has been a top priority, articulated in the vision and in previous studies. We did actually, because the nature of our study, drill down into some of those details and explored again with the community, potential approaches to resilience in the harbor, whether that be a coastal barrier out of the harbor itself, or looking at the edge of that bulkhead that surrounds the perimeter of the district, or looking at something a little more on the land side with that in terms of fortification. And we looked at the pros and cons of each of those approaches with the community, and got community support for an approach which is mostly focused on the perimeter edge of the Situate Harbor Business District. And then we've been able to outline in pretty good detail, solid recommendations which would help the town incrementally build up that resilience for that year, you're building up over those decades that will lead to that seventh of sea level rise potentially. It's not all, you know, one giant project, but looking at things that you can do in the very near term, like installing backflow preventers on outflows in the district, to looking at something a little bit longer term, like CalStar, which I'd articulate, with a pilot project the town could undertake around Cole Parkway, to show other private property owners how this perimeter flood protection can be improved. And then we have some other recommendations in that report as well, that was a long-term health of the district, and that would interest the planning board in regard to some zoning recommendations that would improve resilience for future building investments, and potentially create an opportunity for voluntary migration uphill if the business district were expanded onto some of those side streets. So, this is just sampling of some of the ideas that are in this, very sort of specific and concrete, getting down to the details, which are consistent with the overall vision that you just all been talking about. And again, I mean, we have been talking with Harriman and the other consultants that the town is working with as the master plan advances as well, so we're, we're excited. I'd be delighted to come back another time when you have more time, if there are questions, or happy to enter things in right now if you have those.
Thank you very much.
Okay, did you ask any questions?
Yes.
Just because you mentioned it, is, is there any experience up and down on the coast where people have tried to tackle this by moving inland and uphill? Has that been much of a successful approach?
Yeah, I would say it's, it's been floated more and more frequently as an idea, but in terms of examples where districts have actually started to implement that and relocate businesses or properties, I think there's less, less solid examples even nationally where that is really taking place. But that's something I think, as you look to that long-term arc, it's reasonable to set the ability up for people to do that voluntarily through zoning, and if that happens or doesn't happen, that's kind of up to the individual property owners and the real estate market around the district, but it's a reason, it's a very reasonable approach to allow that.
Yeah, and it just see the property rent thing to be in the, the big, you know, break on all that.
It would be, it would be up to the individual property owners.
All right.
It would be up to the individual property owners to make that decision. Yeah, you'd have to, you'd be up to zoning residential, right?
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Very informative. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for wanting to hear about it, and thank you to everyone who showed up and participated in all the efforts. There'll be plenty more in the future that we'll need your support on, so thank you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We now have a continued public hearing, discussion of a public benefit for 18 Fort
And who's coming in, Sheri?
Don McGeele and Bob Galvin.
Okay.
You do have some about our timeline, just saying that.
Okay. For what?
For 18 Fort.
Okay.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Tables kind of set up here.
All right, gentlemen, we are here this evening to discuss the public benefit. That's all we're talking about tonight, is the public benefit, all right? And I have read Mr. Galvin's letter, and your response is, you proposed $15,000. Okay. I'm gonna open this up to the board for comments. How do you want to start?
I'll reserve my comments.
All right. Ben?
I don't really have any specific comments to await, await your kind of presentation. I guess one thing I'd like you to touch on is how, I guess, the valuation was determined.
And where'd it come from? What made you decide on 15,000?
Well, do you want us to be first? Go ahead, you go first.
No, I was just, I figured what they were, when we originally had thought about putting the Conservation Commission, what they wanted to do. Bob had most of the communications with them, but I talked to my civil engineer and got an idea of what cost for, what it would cost for what they, we thought they wanted to do, and that's what we came up with. I don't know if they're gonna use it to that or would use it for that, because I guess that's now delayed, or they don't know what they want to do, so that's how we came up with that.
That figure?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll just kind of give you a little bit more specifics. The planning board kind of let me know that there was this Constitution Park project that probably needed some funding and/or needed some improvements, and I made some efforts to reach out to the commission, and after several efforts, I heard back from Ms. Walkie that it might make more sense to contribute to a trail project where they may need a bridge. And I tried to get some more details, because Mr. McGeele, on his engineer, would literally go out there and evaluate how much that bridge would cost. It's a trail bridge, not a vehicle bridge, so that's a little bit different. We really couldn't find out, actually found out from Karen, who was able to finally tell me it was the one next to the Dunkin' Donuts. My understanding is that it's quite a bit away from actually being done, and the area's not well even cut out yet, and it's probably a $300,000 project over the course of all the things that they would like to do. So, Don talked to Grady Engineering, how much would it cost to put in some type of a bridge over a stream, and we kind of came up with this type of a price, which we thought would definitely benefit people that lived in this area, including, you know, potential future residents of this development, and that's how we kind of came up with it.
Karen, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, we, I walked the area where they were thinking of putting the bridge with Frank Snow and Amy Walkie and Sean McCarthy and Penny Pipes and myself, and the bridge, it would need to be a fairly wide bridge, and you'd have to make a path to actually get to the bridge. And so, because things with the town are all prevailing wage, and you have to have the plans, it's not something that could be done tomorrow. It's still several years away, although they would, they would definitely want to get moving on this. So, we thought a monetary contribution for the debt, for the increased density would be the best thing, and then if they couldn't use it for the pathway, there are items in the park also that need to be done too. Both items are equally important, and they would serve, the benefit has to occur for Green Bush, and so either one or the other, but neither project is ready, is shovel-ready to go.
All right.
You know, one of the other things I thought was important, if we made the monetary contribution, then we kind of avoid some of the other questions that the planning board would ordinarily have to consider, and that was basically how you ensure the payment, and how things are gonna be constructed, and a timeframe that would be available to you and to the town as soon as the town was ready to do it. And our only request would be maybe that the, if the money could be due before we get any type of occupancy permit on the first unit, that would be great if there's no immediate urgency, because we'd like to try to do something that generates some money in order to try to pay it, but we will, we would certainly commit to doing it, and we wouldn't be entitled to anything that would result in use of this until that time. But that's completely up to you, you all will pay it when you ultimately want it.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board then. Steve, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I have a number of questions and comments here, and, you know, first off, the idea is to, to provide actual on-site infrastructure improvements. You know, I'm worried that 15,000 towards what might only be just money, will never deliver anything, so I'm concerned about that. I would also say that whatever we do, even if it's 15,000 for some specific project, that we need those specifics on the project, including a written description, you know, the cost estimate, a sketch plan... the cost estimate, a sketch plan, all those things. This is kind of the first time we've been through this process, and I think we should accept the expectations that we we need to, we need to get all of the requirements in the zoning by law. And they're fairly lengthy and fairly specific. And even, I mean, if they're saying we're going to fund this particular project or partially fund, and we agree with that, and I haven't got there yet, I wouldn't want the project spelled out just like any other project that you would do here. And it includes a specific timeframe for completion, like a list of permits required. All of those are part of the the overall requirement for the public benefit. And I wouldn't want to cut any, I'm not looking to make an easy on the planning board, I wouldn't want to cut those corners because I'm interested in setting the precedent and the expectations for what should be delivered as part of a public benefit.
I'm going to wait.
The other comment I have is that let's suppose this thing is three years out. That sounds like a long way out, right? What other infrastructure improvements could be done that would benefit from Green Bush? Are there lighting upgrades in the area? A sidewalk upgrade? Are there, you know, are there other opportunities besides this?
Steve, all right, Steve, hang on one second. Hang on.
Steve, I asked DPW, I asked, I asked around for what projects, what infrastructure projects are there? What other projects are there that people would be willing to say that would need it to be done in Green Bush that could qualify for a public benefit by being in an approved plan, et cetera? And I'm going to tell you, I got nothing. I got nothing from the town. And then, so I talked to Conservation, and I said, you know, are there projects that you want to do that would qualify as a public benefit? And they say yes, but unfortunately, they are a couple of years out, they don't have the specifics, and they're not going to have the specifics right away. And that's why we came up with the idea of a monetary contribution.
I'm okay considering a monetary contribution, but I think what it's building towards and what the expectations are have to be clearly defined. And, you know, this sounds pretty funny to me. It sounds like the money that never, ever gets spent on the thing we expected to get spent on, right? So I have a problem with that.
Okay, I have to add to that trail situation. This has been something that has been ongoing for a good number of years. A lot of it has to do with money and the lack thereof. And I think at some point Conservation will be coming back to CPC to look for funds. That main bridge is $300,000. The chances of that happening anytime soon are slim and none. But we can clear it, we can make it more walkable, and I think that if we were to put whatever monetary amount we agree upon into a fund that is dealt with by Conservation with approval of the planning board, we can make sure that it goes where we want it to go.
I do already have some money for the park. I think she quoted me somewhere around the $60,000 range, but it's not quite a lot to do anything in the Constitution Park yet.
Okay. All right, Ben?
Is there any infrastructure that we could do that essentially, it would be public infrastructure, but it would be immediately adjacent to this property? That would provide a benefit to the the local neighbors and all of that?
They already have a brick.
They have already enjoyed the benefit of streetscapes with bricked sidewalks and decorative lights and so on. That's already existing on Fort Place. It's already there. So.
Is there somewhere nearby that's not there, that, Miss Galvin?
Dunkin' Donuts.
But still in the Green Bush area? I mean, what we're really trying to do is, you know, sort of build out the look and feel of the whole Green Bush business district and if there are areas we could invest, you know, to extend the brick walk or add the additional light holes, maybe that's a place to look at it.
We don't need it, Don, yeah. Maybe we need to, let's decide on the amount of money that we want, and then we can go forward and finalize where we want it to go to. There are other issues that for a later date that we need to talk about in terms of the actual development, but let's figure out what we want. And then we'll figure out where it's going to go and how it's going to work, Steve. Okay?
Actually, I'd rather do the other one and figure out what is the work we want to get accomplished, and then how much will that cost, right?
We're not at that point yet.
But we're not at that point.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking people to think about that and try to get to that point, because we need it, we need it in order to approve anything.
I understand that, but Steve, you need to understand, too, that trying to deal with the town side of situat is like punching feathers. We don't get anything from input from them. The only people we got anything from was Conservation. Now, we could turn.
Well, then break that up then, right? But all I'm saying is, you know, the zoning by law does is say, throw your hands up if you have trouble with the town.
No, no, and we're, we're not doing that.
We're trying to accomplish, so let's try to accomplish it.
We could turn around and say that across the street, next to Dunkin' Donuts, there is a park, there are benches, maybe money could be spent, we could come up with a program, because I've seen people sitting there enjoying coffee and what have you. And that would benefit Green Bush. So let's take this under advisement and give it a little bit more time, and we'll figure it out.
So I will go back to Conservation and tell them we need more detail, and and we'll go from there. But I think that, I think you need to determine, I know you don't want to tonight, Steve, but there's a public benefit that has to be had here in order to do this development. And, you know, is.
I'd just like to see it materialize.
We would too.
Because we had a lot of promises in the past where public benefit didn't materialize, right? So we'd like to see it materialize, and I think, and also like to make sure that we were very clear about it, because, you know, our new bylaws really are, you know, spell it out pretty clearly as to what we ought to articulate, right? And so let's get it all down on a piece of paper. If we get to a place where, you know, that particular project, there should be an option that that particular project, you know, after whatever defined timeframe doesn't occur, that there's an alternate public benefit that's still developed to ensure that it occurs, right? But really, it just feels like, like to me, just it just disappeared in a black hole.
Well, I mean, from the developer's perspective, if the board said.
Do you want to take a minute so we can hear you?
I didn't know whether it was appropriate, so.
Oh, go for it. It's fine.
From our perspective, we would earmark the money in any way. It was required to make sure it gets spent on this project, and if there was a timeframe that elapsed and it didn't get spent, certainly we would not have any objection or place any restriction on the money, and it could be spent on another project that might come up in the next three years or five years, whatever, whatever frame, timeframe you want. We would do this now, but it can't be done. That's, that's the biggest problem, I think, we have. So the only thing that we thought was reasonable to do was to to offer some money.
Well, I appreciate that. And what I'm saying is, money by itself, it is not enough. There's, you know, section 580 of the, of the zoning by law has fairly specific description of describing the public benefit. And so if the money intended to go to a particular public benefit, then describe it. There's a written description, there's a description of what that public benefit is, what the specifications of the town is, what the cost estimate of the project is, a sketch of a plan.
We can't even, we can't even find a project to give money to.
All of those things are are a part of it, and I, you know, it's just a, it feels to me like we're, we're just going to leave it nebulous, and I don't want to do that.
We're not going to, Steve, believe me. It will not be left.
I think between now and when this public hearing continues again, I hear what you're saying, and we will try to nail down more from the town side where exactly they want to spend the money and try to come up with the parameters in the bylaw. But I will.
That's what I'm asking, is let's be more specific. And, you know, if 15,000 or whatever it is is intended to build a bridge, then, you know, if the plan is much bigger with a trail and all of that, you could certainly have that whole plan in and say, here's the bridge that will be, you know, funded by the public benefit, right? So.
Well, I mean, 15,000 isn't going to cover the bridge.
It's a street floor.
All right, we're going around, Steve, we're going around in circles here. Karen?
I don't really think we are.
I disagree.
I'm asking, I'm just asking that we articulate specifically what the benefit will be.
And that.
It's not, it's not a dollar. Those dollars are going to deliver something. They're going to deliver some onsite or offsite infrastructure improvement, in this case, offsite, I guess.
We do not have.
And provide.
Right, we do not have the deliverable at this moment in time. We don't. That is the problem. We don't have it. And I'm not sure.
That's pretty nebulous.
Excuse me?
Well, that's pretty nebulous, not in keeping with what we're trying to accomplish here.
All right, so Steve, I will commit in the next month to working with Conservation to see if we can't get some of this stuff in writing, and I'm hoping the applicant will commit to maybe funding some graphics if that's what it takes to try to get this, to get a plan of where this, this, you know, improvements might be made. But, you know, are, is the board generally happy? Is $5,000 a unit basically enough for a public density bonus? I think that you have to talk about that aspect as well.
And I would say no, off the top of my head. So if it's five units?
Remember, we have two units by right. We probably could have built four before the bylaw changed. The applicant behind us got five or.
Five units.
He's got five units. He didn't have to pay it at all, but he was under the old bylaw, and I know that's apples and oranges. You know, this project, you haven't seen the redesign, but we've now redesigned the building as a result of the design review board, and it's actually the third time we've redesigned it.
Four.
Four, okay.
Design review is a four.
You know, we paid for an extensive peer review as everybody's learning about the new bylaw that was lots more than everybody else paid for. It's a 10,000 square foot site. That's, that's it. And I think you'll really like what we have done. All the work that you'll be looking at on September 24th is done now, and Don's ready to submit it, because we also have design review on September 2nd. We were able to incorporate everything that we were asked to do with the design review board. So I think people are going to be pleased with this product. And it is, it's a modest product, and I, and I understand, but it's the type of diverse housing that everybody was looking for, close to the station, walkable, and that's why the trail makes the most sense, because that's another walk, walkable aspect.
We have to figure that out then. And we also have to figure out the monetary aspect of this.
Yep.
So Patty has just stated she didn't think that $5,000 per unit was sufficient. Ben?
To be honest, like, in, in preparing for this meeting, I tried to find any sort of metrics on this, and it's really difficult to make a, any sort of scientific assessment or informed assessment. So I honestly have a hard time picking a monetary value without any more information financially and otherwise. So I guess as long as this, I'm like, I'm a little bit with Steve. I'm in between a rock and a hard, it's like, or it's like a chicken and egg thing.
Right.
And, and so to me, I could be fine with that amount, but I, it is nebulous as to the project that it might go towards.
Right.
So, I mean, I know it's probably very frustrating for our applicant here, and I apologize for that, but it is just, I don't really know what, I don't have a great answer to give you, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
Are they the first to do this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you're suffering growing pains here.
Yeah, you're suffering growing pains, and I, and I feel badly for that.
There are, I mean, significant financial growing pains, too.
Yes, I understand that.
So that I've already paid out, and that lists on top of it. So, you know, and it is only the three.
So I think what we need to do then is to make this a little bit more concrete with Conservation, come up with something in writing, and we'll figure it out. So hopefully by the time we meet again on the 24th, we will be able to have something more definitive about where monies could go.
And not only that, if we waited until then and we spoke to Conservation, we may have a little more concrete idea of how much money they would need, and then we could make a, come at it from that angle.
You know, that area right near the Dunkin' Donuts now probably has the capacity to accept some benches now.
Yes.
So if somebody wanted us to do some benches now, you know, even preliminary to their actually building this trail system, that's something we would absolutely agree to do also, because that's something we can actually do now.
Physically do.
It does need, it could need benches. It also has the connection going from the paved portion to the existing trail portion needs improvement so that it's more handicap accessible. There's a big bump in that area right now.
Ben, if we could get maybe your engineer to go across the street, scope it out.
Tell us how much.
And tell us, you know, what he can do, come up with a plan, get rid of the bump, make it more handicapped accessible to get to the start of that trail.
Okay.
Figure out some benches.
Yeah.
And make the place look more attractive. Now it's nothing more than a dust bowl, and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I think even, like, obviously a little bit more working with Concom or their representative to do a site walk together, so I'm sure you've already done something like that, but to get some more direction from them. And then, for me, even just a rough scope of work with a ballpark cost estimate is like, that's getting me feeling better about we're hitting the, hitting a bylaw or something.
I'm all, I'm all about doing that, and we've tried to do that with what we've, we've tried on different locations to do that. And, you know, my worry is that, okay, I spent $1,200 or $1,500 to do these plans for a scope, and then, you know, just to get to present it, and then, well, that's not what Conservation wants. I mean, we had trouble even getting, I haven't even been able to walk with them. I haven't even.
You know what? We're going to put that together. Karen?
Yeah.
We're going to try. Yeah.
I will talk to them, I will try to talk to them tomorrow.
All right.
I mean, it's very difficult trying to get people together with the whole COVID thing and the workload that each one of our departments has.
We are loaded.
And so we are doing our best, and I will, I will ask Frank Snow again and Amy to, let's schedule a site visit and see if we can't refine this to the area up at the beginning part of the park.
Okay?
Yep.
All right.
We'll make ourselves available whenever it's convenient.
I'll have, yeah, I'll have the engineer down there, you know, next week, and we'll just get something up and present it, and.
Okay.
I lived at home last summer until the day they wanted to go for a walk.
Me too.
What's that?
I was home last summer except the day they wanted to take that walk. So I had a little loss.
Figure it out.
Okay.
Okay, we will figure it out. Okay, Steve? We're going to work on this and make it work.
I think that's the most fair approach. I'd like to rather see physically what we're going to do, you know, whether it's 15,000 or 20,000 or whatever it is, I'd like to see physically what we're going to deliver, right? And I appreciate the fact that we're going to do that as well, so we'll see if we can figure it out.
All right, we're on the same page. Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 24th.
Thank you.
All right, wait a minute. All right, wait a minute. You know what, we might have some public comment.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Q and A session has started.
A star six one on the phone today would like to first ask a question.
No?
No.
Probably isn't, isn't great.
Yeah, we did. Okay, Q and A session not started?
Yes.
No, anyway. Says it's let going.
Q and A session is over.
There you go, it's done here.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the site plate administrator review and special permit for the density intended parking in the village center in neighborhood Green District, Green Bush Village Center Sub-District, Green Bush Gateway District, but the property located in 18 Ford Place until September 24th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Continue to try for action until October 30th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, unanimous.
We'll see you guys soon.
Thank you very much. I wasn't sure whether everybody was doing masks or not.
Oh, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's going to be up September 24th, whatever time it is.
He's signing that blank piece of paper.
Yeah.
You just spent your paying a hundred thousand dollars.
I just signed a blank piece of paper.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. Quickly along, we have a Form A for 143 and 145 Border Street. We prepare.
I think the applicant is on the line, so they would like to present for the Form A.
Okay.
The applicant would like to present. Who would that be, please?
Albert.
Hello?
Mr. Albert.
Doug Oliver? Are you there?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello?
Doug? Oh, he's waving. All right, can you hear us?
I can't hear you.
Can't hear him. We can't hear you.
I can't hear.
John Bleke is on the line?
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm on the line.
All right. And we're looking for, who else?
Our engineering firm, Merrill Engineering, was presenting the original plan.
Okay. All right, so basically, um.
Why does this have to be so incredibly frustrating?
He's not muted. Hello?
Hello?
Albert.
Okay, there, we can hear. Mr. Albert, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
This is our Merrill Engineering firm.
All right, would you make your presentation, please?
Yeah. Can you hear me very well? It sounds very quiet on this end and the, going through the computer audio did not work.
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Just because the speakers.
It says.
My goodness.
I know, really.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I, I can barely hear you, so I'm not sure what you're looking at. So what I'm going to talk my way through, the easiest way to understand this project is to look at the key sheet. Does everybody have that in front of them?
Yes.
Because there's a plan set of three sheets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, if you can, if you can see the project, this is, this is a piece of
property owned by Alliance Head Trust and we're dividing it into three buildable lots, lot 13, I mean, excuse me, 15, 16, and 17. And then there's a small wedge piece called Lot 14. It is anticipated to be sold into the Smith, a budding lot.
Mm-hmm.
That is the essence of the project. All the lots being created have a minimum of 100 feet on Border Street and the two strips that you see on lots 15 and 16 are 100 feet wide minimum until they widen out to the houses. Because the rest of the sheets have a more detailed map and traverse lines and things like that that are required for land court. So there's a lot more detail on those, but that is the overview with picture. It is a, that is about as simple as we get. All the lots have buildable area, build area required by zoning, even though I don't, if you endorse with them, indicate compliance that.
Okay, Karen?
All right, so here, here for to the little triangle piece, that's the piece that you guys saw in January, that's the, they wanted to give to the next door neighbor, sell to them because of the encroachment that had, you did the right of first refusal, you refused that for 61A. So the rest of the area, they're trying to make, they're trying to separate the house lot and so it has frontage and it has access on Border Street. It does have a common driveway, so it's not accessing its own, its own frontage because there's a big wetland system, but the driveway has been there for at least 20 years. The whole land is in 61A. That's just an FYI. That doesn't impact whether you endorse or not endorse a Form A. I would recommend endorsement.
Discussion from the board. Ben?
So Lot 16, the house that's shown is a pre-existing house. It's not?
Yes, on the street, yes.
Okay, because I just, it said three, three buildable lots, so I didn't know. But Lot 16 is a pre-existing.
That's that big house you see, right up there on the street.
And, and Karen, so are you saying that the, the driveway access is not?
No, it's not. That's the big house up, up front.
No, I'm talking about this house.
That's.
That's the barn.
That's a, but there's a barn.
That's the barn.
Lot 16, down by the, by the Gulf River?
Yeah.
The big house is Lot 16. The barn is on Lot 17.
I'm not concerned about the barn. I'm talking about Lot 16.
Yeah, that has access over a common driveway. If you look on the next sheet, the sheet goes and it has, it has access over Border Street through a driveway and goes to the Smith lot as well.
One, two, three are on the same driveway?
Yes, one of them was always not too big. 15 is not a buildable lot. It's not labeled that, but it's pretty hard to get there through the wetlands.
Okay.
I mean.
I don't think they made decisions on whether they're buildable or not. This is an AR.
Right, right, right. It's just, yeah. All right. Steve? Ben, do you have anything?
I just, I just didn't understand the, the access situation.
All right.
I guess.
And Rebecca?
No, did you, nope, I'm fine. Patty?
I'm fine.
Steve?
I'm fine.
All right. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Okay, I move to endorse as approval not required a plan of land 143 and 145 Border Street, Citra Mass, being a division of LC Plan 19784DNG, stamped by Douglas L. Aberg, PLS, of Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors for the applicant owners of Alliance Head Trust, J. Maxwell Blakey, trustee, revised 83/2020, as the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least a distance presently required by the Citra zoning bylaw on the public way of Border Street.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis? Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
unanimous, all in favor. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bleke, everybody, thank you very much. You're all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on. We have a discussion of senior center parking monitoring plan.
All right, so I sent you, I sent you all a draft letter. I didn't get any comments back, except that you all liked the letter. So I would guess you would just want to send, make a motion to send the letter as written, which details the inadequacy of the parking monitoring plan for the senior center.
Yes. I agree.
What do you mind, Lee? Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Looking to see.
Yep. Did a good job, Karen.
Crazy.
All right, all those in favor of sending that letter, please respond by saying aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We need to approve minutes?
I move to approve the meeting minutes for July 23, 2020.
Is there a second? Second.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous.
Accounting?
I move to approve a requisition of $412.50 to Merrill Corporation for the peer review of 1680 to 20 Man Hill Road, Stormwater SPAR common driveway, for $62.50 to the Chester Consulting for Stormwater peer review of 36 back the road, $645 to Chester Consulting for the peer review of 18 Ford Place, for $4,562.50 to Harrowman Associates for consulting services for the mast, for the master plan, for $152.88 to Gate House Media for legal ad for 18 Ford Place, $168 to Gate House Media for the legal ad for 14 to 16 Old Country Way, $69.74 to Schwab Bing for office supplies, for $2,396 to Horstley Witten for the peer review services for the seaside at Citra Base Two, for $937.50 to Merrill Corporation for the peer review of 61 Border Street, Stormwater, and for $745 to Horstley Witten Group for the peer review of 14 to 16 Old Country Way.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous. In favor?
All right, liaison reports. CPC met the other night. There had been discussion about doing, repairing a Lawson Road stonewall on Country Way and it's basically just down beyond, heading toward North City would just be on the edge of Garage. But there are too many issues in terms of who owns it, where is it, is it in the public right of way? So I'm not sure if that's going to go anywhere at all. There was discussion about Mordecai Lincoln. They're working on signing a P and S and I think that was, was a pretty quick meeting. So I'm not, I don't think that we have anything going on for, are we having a special town meeting, Karen? Do you know?
I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, so.
Find out next week.
Next week. So that's it for CPC and I'm not doing anything else right now.
I went to street acceptance and Haveli Cove was disabused of the thing that was upon the streets. They had to be told that it's a common driveway and not a, you know, a neighborhood. They wanted to know why. We told them, well, they could take that house. I mean, that's how that goes.
This was Steve, for those of you who don't know, this was Steve Bajorklin's residential compound there at 105 Haveli Road.
Mm-hmm.
With five houses. That's where that is.
Four.
Four houses.
Private access.
And this was a pool.
Yeah.
Private access.
And they put in a swimming pool.
And they wanted street acceptance?
Yes.
Not happening.
Actually, it says in the homeowners association, it's a perpetuity, it's private drive, because it's a common driveway. So, and then there was Hill, Hillcrest, what is it?
Hillcrest Road.
Hillcrest Road, which is, I never even knew there until I went to find it, is behind the Barker Tavern. It is a dirt road that they want to pave for themselves because the Amazon trucks, since the pandemic have beaten the crap out of it, is dusty, it is dirty and, and it's interesting because the driveways don't come out to that road, they go out to Richfield and they don't know who lives there. So they're going to investigate paving it themselves. And the other two were Dear Carmen and Studdly Farm. That's not close project for us. So they are not up for street acceptance. That's it.
That's it. So I, no, I don't have anything because for that meeting I was supposed to be at, I, it was my birthday and I didn't go.
Oh, wow.
We have priorities here. Fine. Ben?
Um, I don't really have anything from some of my other liaison positions. Trying to think. I connected with Becky Malmet from Water Resources. I'm not really sure exactly what they're up to. They're kind of in crisis mode. Just the water is tough right now.
Yeah, it is.
And, but I don't have anything substantive on that. And then the only other thing is that most of you saw, I'm just trying to schedule this advisory committee meeting for the master plan stuff, which will probably be looking like an evening that Monday or Tuesday, either the last day of August or the first day of September. I will send that out shortly.
All right. Steve, do you have anything?
No, I don't have any more to add than that.
Okay, thank you.
Except where's our water report?
Yeah, where's our water report? We don't know.
I get a month's bill on that today, so.
Everybody did.
Well, then he's got an excuse for everything. Okay, planning and development report.
Steve, actually, he told me that he sent you the water report.
No, he didn't.
Lost in the mail.
I didn't think so, but I just, I, I wanted to verify one more time and I didn't believe he did. But planning and development, we remain very busy. Toll Brothers is going like gangbusters out there. They put in a letter to ask for a surety reduction. I sent it out to the peer review engineer for review. We will be walking, I will be walking the site with them sometime after August 24th. We haven't set up a date yet. Drew will be under construction hopefully by the end of the year. We remain very busy with our, all our projects that we have in Green Bush and we've been approached to go on a few site walks and meet with a few other people about other projects in Green Bush. So we remain very busy.
Does anybody have anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you.